Okay, this is January 27th, 2020, 10 o'clock. We call this meeting or we'll call it Smiley.
Here.
Hamill.
Here.
I'm gonna have to hear. Number four, approval of payroll warrants and claims.
Sure move.
I'll second that.
On favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Number five, approval of the minutes of the last meeting, January 13th, 2020.
I'll approve those. Everybody's good with them?
I'll second.
On favor.
Aye.
Discussion possible action regarding the following road crossing permits for target.
It's gonna be three miles north of Winoka. Now take that as. That well they're doing out there.
The big flare.
Okay.
One more commotion.
I'll second.
On favor.
Aye. Do you have your ram fixed up there at Martin's? Your hydraulic ram?
Yeah.
Is that what you, Martin's machine shop? That on your track?
Yeah.
No, on my, uh, the doors on the treacherous, I had two of them rebuilt.
Oh, them right?
Yeah, because they were out of sleep.
They do them big rams.
Yeah, he told me that when I.
Yeah.
Okay, number seven, discussion possible action regarding the title sheets for a county bridge that approach plan Greenleaf Creek job. State job number 31776, NC's 04.
Do you want a copy and us take a copy? I've got, cause I made my copy too.
Would that be the title sheet for being the big one?
Okay.
Yeah.
I've got.
Yeah, yes, we can do that.
Okay.
Anyway, that's a green leaf bridge project in your.
Do we get rest of the people?
Uh, no, no, we're still waiting on, uh, two, two, for the landlords to sign. Do you have a item for bridge inspection stuff too?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I've got the invoice and inspection because.
Okay, alright.
I have title sheets on one and then the bridge inspection and conference on the second.
Yeah. Then you'd sign the second page too. Oh, for you to sign the second page too.
All three pages good?
Yeah.
Are we the bridge owner?
Yeah, we're the bridge owner.
Oh, okay.
That's a bridge up on the state line.
Okay. We are there.
We already have a.
Got it now.
We already have a motion on the second, did I miss that?
No, we haven't, we haven't made a motion.
Okay. So something's going on this stuff.
Okay, so I need to make a motion to accept this then. For Greenleaf. The Greenleaf Creek Bridge project.
Yeah, I'll second.
On favor.
Aye. You're gonna need the bottom of your hat for that back there.
Oh, oh.
Thank you.
I took it all.
Is there any else?
Those are two pages that they got.
Oh. Oh, okay.
I'll know when we probably submit that next month if you get the landlord back in. Probably submit it in March. Yeah, we won't, you know, back in a lot of time.
Have they found the other two?
Yeah, I think they're still waiting on one through Florida.
Florida, yeah.
And there was another one that lives off December.
Here, I'll give that to David, both of these need signed.
Oh, I thought I, I'm sorry.
So would you complete that if you want the second page out?
Yes.
There you go.
Okay, number eight, discussion possible action regarding bridge inspection invoice number 67615. And report of conference between Woods County and CBA.
That was for, uh, bridge number eight up on the state line. I think he has reported back through.
I'll move, we accept that. My second.
On favor.
Aye.
I keep one and you keep one, so.
Okay, do we have some to sign, right?
That's what we were.
Oh, oh, okay.
There you go.
Okay, so we've already.
Sure, I have it.
That.
Yeah.
Voting on number eight. Okay, we'll move on to number nine.
Thank you, Donnie.
Yeah, I'll be right back soon.
Discussion regarding Winoka ambulance. You're up.
Thank you all for allowing me to come and speak to you this morning. I really appreciate it. First of all, if you don't know who I am, I'm Susan Bradford, I'm the mayor of the city of Winoka. Prior to this year, um, we had a, um, a city manager. And, and that city manager has gone on, so now, um, I'm, because of the economic situation in our community, we haven't rehired the city manager. So I'm taking over those responsibilities, so I'm learning as I'm going here, so. I just wanted to come and discuss with you the, the situation of our ambulance. Winoka has a unique situation because we have the largest, um, with the sand hills, we have the largest tourist attraction probably in Woods County, I think that's fair to say. Plus we have a, a large population in our community of, of aged people as well. So, um, it's important for me as mayor to see, um, an EMS presence there. However, uh, we're in a, we're forced, um, to consider some options right now because of our economic situation. I'm, I'm sure you've heard that the only major retailer that we have in our city is, is moving out middle of February. So we're struggling with options there, our budget's declining, you all know that story, so, you know, it's, it's nothing new. But, um, our ambulance budget is about 20% of, of our fiscal year receipts. And under the current situation, we are unable to, um, pay, um, ambulance employees a decent rate, a decent rate. We can't, um, we can't budget more money towards that situation. And unless we do that, we can't, we can't pay them more. As a result, um, we're, we don't have the people to work the ambulance. We've had in the past month, uh, I think to have Alba stand by at least twice that I'm aware of. And, um, I, I know, um, I know that Bryce Kennedy at, at one point before has approached you all about a 522, establishing a 522 district of some kind. I don't know that that's the answer. I, I just want our city and the county to have, the citizens to have the best emergency services that we can provide for them under our situation. I did bring, and I apologize for this not being in a more professional manner, but it gives you an idea, um, of the, um, pay in the area. We reached out to Alba and, and didn't get any information from them. My ambulance director is, is very ill, so we just kind of threw this together hastily, and so I apologize. We didn't get a response from Alba, but it gives you an idea about how, uh, my employees are paid compared with, uh, areas, area ambulance services that have a 522 district. We are unable, as you can see, the hourly rates are very low, the standby pay and the run pay is also very low. We have very difficult time getting people to, uh, go on runs out town, help people to the hospital, open the city unit and so forth. Because they just don't get paid enough to, it's not worth their time. We're really in the situation right now that Cherokee was in, and, um, when they established their 522 district. And, and I'm, under the current economic conditions, again, I am not, uh, capable of expending all my CDs and exhausting my financial resources at the expense of our ambulance services. I understand that as a county, that, that you, that the commissioners are supposed to have a plan in place for our ambulance services that you all, that it's your responsibility, I guess.
That's a misunderstanding.
Oh, I see, and so.
I mean, we have no obligation.
You have no obligation?
No.
Okay.
Now, it's up to you, if you want a 522, there could be three, three of those in Woods County. Then there's three ambulance services, which are all city. Now.
Well, now, I'm not, I'm not suggesting any one thing. I would just like for us to perhaps establish, um, a board or a researching, um, entity. A committee would, a committee would work, of, of people that are from all of the services to try to, uh, figure out what would be the best way for us to go.
That, that has, that was done about two or three years ago.
That was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And what was the result of that?
The results were that the 522 through the whole county would bring in about $420,000. Somewhere, don't hold me to those figures because they, they did it, but that.
And that was countywide?
That was the entire county.
I see.
With the maximum mill levy.
Uh-huh, okay.
And when that happens, then, then we set up a board, we can set up one, or we can set up three.
Right.
And that board actually runs the ambulance.
Oh, of course, yeah, I understand, I understand.
But it is our, that's about the extent. We have two responsibilities. We put it on the ballot for your people in that district, ambulance district, which is a school district essentially, the way things are set up.
You can do school district or countywide, I think.
Right, but I mean, that's what distinguishes the two, the three ambulance services.
The services.
Well, and that's my point, is that, uh, you know, I'm not just concerned about our city, I'm concerned about the county as a whole.
Right.
Uh, it's, I mean, I have communication with, I've had communication with EMS people up here. They're struggling with the same thing we're struggling with.
Exactly.
It's having enough people to, and, and by, uh, my, from my way of thinking, and of course, please, I'm new at this, and so you can straighten me out if you want to, I'm perfectly good with that, but, um, from my way of thinking, if, if we were to establish a 522 district countywide, we would have the resources to perhaps pay the people, what we need to pay them to, to properly staff our ambulance services, not just in Winoka, but in the other cities as well.
Also county.
What, was it meant?
No.
Not received well?
I think that's what happened, is 420,000 doesn't even start the payroll in Alba.
Uh-huh, okay. But, you, I mean, you're not counting, that's just the resources that you have coming in from the mill levy, that's not considering what the actual work, uh, you know, the actual work and the, the revenue that you generate from the service itself.
Well, see, we don't have any control of that.
Right.
I mean, that, that's for you all to decide, our, we, we put it on, we put it on the ballot for you. Written as, as you all see fit, and whether it's countywide or it's ambulance district, yet those are the two options for the 522. And you can have one 522, one, one, you can have a 522 down there yourself. The obligation that we have in that is to get it on the ballot and to set up the board. And I think it's a five-member board.
We have an, we have a, an interesting situation in our school district as well because, uh, our school district extends into Woodward and Major Counties, and both of those districts have a 522 district already established. So, um, there's some impeding.
Well, but those people, those people don't pay that tax.
That goes to the Woodward County and Major County.
Major County, right.
Right.
But those people have the ability to vote in their school district, and they aren't paying, they aren't paying an additional ad lorm in those counties because they are not. They aren't paying towards the 522s in Major and Woodward County.
Because they're in Winoka's school district.
Yes.
And then Winoka's school district has no fee?
We have, I'm sorry, please explain.
You don't have a 522.
Oh, no, no, we don't.
Maybe they have one, but they don't have to pay it because they're in Winoka's school district.
Right.
I don't.
If you had that, I mean, it would, it's not double dipping on those landowners, is what I'm trying to tell you.
Okay.
If, if.
They would only pay in the Winoka.
If you would pass a 522 in the Winoka's school district, those people in Major and Woods, Woodward County, their ad lorm would go up. And they don't come here and pay their ad lorm, that's a swap out between the treasures.
I see.
We do that, it's just like the school district. The, the taxes that are paid in that Winoka's school district in, in Woods, I mean Woodward and Major County, they send a check from Major and Woodward County to Woods County for that.
Okay.
The ad lorm that goes to the school districts. So it, it all gets swapped out up in the treasure.
Where does that money go now?
Comes back to the Winoka.
Here to Woods, to Woods County or?
To Winoka's school district.
Winoka's school district.
I see, I see.
But that's just the part of, see, this 522.
And if you had a, a ambulance set up, it would go to that. You know, if you had that fee, you know, and that money was recovered there, it would come back to us, and then we would give it to this committee or whoever runs this.
Right, the whole, yes, I understand, okay. Um, and, and so that's what you're suggesting that we do?
And they will have control over your ambulance.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, I understand that.
Well, I mean, once it gets voted in.
But they are our board.
Yeah.
I see.
I mean, they're.
But they are the ones that meaning should, uh, what to do.
And tell you financially and.
If, if, if it was a countywide, I'm guessing that there might not be an ambulance in Winoka. Because the funding may not be there, there may be just enough funding to have one ambulance service in all of Woods County. That would be for the board to decide, not for the commissioner.
That's if, if you go countywide.
Right, that's kind of like Woodward. You know, Morton don't have them, but Woodward does, and Fargo.
Yeah, but they're only 10 minutes, we're talking about half an hour from here to Winoka.
Right, but that's what, that's giving you an example. That's just what happened with countywide.
Right, that's not a, not an option, especially with the, um, resources that we have to do. Many of our calls are out there in their emergency, I mean, when they need somebody, they need somebody.
Actually, Woodward does, like Fargo and Arnett, and even in.
Oh, I think they only have one ambulance house in Woodward County.
Yeah.
And I think that's what you'd look at here, and that's what happens in Alfalfa County.
Well, they got, we would be more like a Buffalo, uh, Harper County, Laverne, I think they're the only two EMSs there, wasn't it? Or was there, you know, when we had that meeting?
Do Harper County and does Woodward and Laverne both have ambulance services?
Yeah, Laverne and Harper County.
Yeah.
And Buffalo and Harper County.
They both have ambulance.
They got 522.
I know, but there, is there an ambulance in both places?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure there is in Laverne.
I mean, I don't, I don't know.
I'm just going, with them ladies.
Yeah, I know there was, is Laverne.
Yeah, yeah, she said, yeah, yeah, that's what she said, Buffalo and Laverne.
But they have a.
I don't know, like, on your research here, it says Buffalo EMS, do they have their own 522 in, in Buffalo?
Yeah, Harper County has.
In that district?
Evidently, yes.
Or is the whole county in it?
Every county around us has a 522.
A full, the full county?
Yeah, yeah, it's all been voted in, Alfalfa County, Major County, Woodward County, Harper County. All have the 522 because.
But I think that's the reason that, and you'd have to talk to somebody, the three ambulance services got together, researched how much money they would get for that. And I think that was the whole thing in a nutshell, is that first off, the board then runs the ambulance service.
Yes.
And it takes it out of the people, and they were more concerned about losing freedom in Winoka than anything else. I, I was not, we weren't really, they.
That's a school district.
They did that all themselves, but it hasn't been very long ago. And like I said, in the last two or three years.
Well, it's in the mayor before you, I think was up here.
Oh, I think so.
Yeah, it was, I mean.
I mean, that's a couple of mayors ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think you're right, yeah.
I mean, your ambulance director and your mayor were involved in.
Yes.
And, and the mayor and the ambulance, or the city manager, I know, Joe Don and the ambulance director here in Alba, Pebbles, and the city ma, or mayor of Winoka, Freedom were involved, and they all decided against it. But I mean, that's for you to find out.
For a county.
I, I don't know, yeah. I don't know, but those are your options.
I see, okay. All right, is there anything else that you would suggest, or, um, you know, what about, what about the?
If you want it on a ballot, you better get your mind made up.
Oh, I know.
Cause we've been talking about this for a couple of years.
I don't know, I mean, and I'm sure they wouldn't, but, I mean, you would think somehow the state of Oklahoma's many calls as you get into sand dunes would be able to help some way, but I'm sure that they wouldn't.
I just, the only thing I'm, I mean, and you talked about this, and that's the thing, we don't know, but it seems like that those, as many calls, and I get the calls because of the fire department calls, you know, it looks like that the insurance and what have you would, would handle part of that, I mean, a big load of that, those ambulance calls.
They do part of it, um, they do part of it, but it's not enough, it's, it's not significant enough to make a difference. So I don't know.
Is that regulated by who?
I'm not sure, I don't know the answer to that question.
What, the pay?
The, what they get per call, I mean, if you, you take insurance or somebody would, would, you know, give you back to the ambulance call, that there'd be a fee for that.
Well, they do pay, I mean, if they're not, if they're not an ambulance subscriber, of course, we have, we have a subscription fee where our local people pay some of it.
But you're out of town people.
Out of town people, they're, they're interested, and we do have, we do have that money coming in.
Some from that.
Right, we do, right. And some Medicare and so forth.
Right, but is that a set rate?
Um, I don't think it's a set rate, I don't, I don't know the answer to that, I'll have to look into it.
It's probably.
Well, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out where to get calls.
Sure.
You could generate more money here, what happened.
Sure, sure. Okay, uh, what about, I, I, I know this has been talked about, um, and, and I just wanted to bring it up so that I would, uh, better understand, uh, what purpose of it is, but the, um, the tax that was passed, uh, countywide, several years ago, that was supposed to be for emergency services, we don't receive anything from that at all.
And it's.
It's not.
We earmark for that.
Well, and it's.
It says emergency, it doesn't say emergency services.
It's for, it's for the health and wellbeing of the citizens of Woods County. So if that was, you know, the, the deal is that my first step would be, and I don't know if we could do that, but there is no obligation to the county commissioners to the ambulance services, okay?
Okay.
To begin with, because they're, they were city deals. And if it, if it was our call, the, our first step would be to pass the 522.
Could find it.
And to set it up, and they would just have to deal with the money, that board would have to take the money that it generates from ad lorm.
Sure.
And then what happens is, is just like you said, everybody's gonna feel shorted because it's probably gonna end up with one ambulance service for the whole county.
Okay.
Maybe, it just depends on what the board says.
Right.
Okay.
But that's where our obligation actually stops, now, do I want people to be without adequate ambulance, I don't, that's not the, the issue. But it would be, it would turn into a 522 board's problem.
I see. All right, um, well, that's really all I have, I appreciate you spending time with me this morning, and then we'll, uh.
If you have a meeting or whatever, like I said, if you want to get it on the ballot, let us know, and we'll, we'll get it on the, the ballot for April. I mean, if they voted in, fine, if they don't.
I don't know.
It kind of gives you an idea of where you stay.
I, I haven't, I haven't read the statutes on that now. I, I know the, the liquor by the drink deal is April 15th to coincide with the primaries. This deal may have already missed the, the deadline, it was in December by the first of the year. Because school board.
You've had the same problem for years.
School board elections.
Got the same answer for you.
Are in normally in February, and, and I think that's.
To see whether the people even do.
Where this one would have to go.
Cause it'd be country school district.
I don't think it'd pass in the county.
You don't?
I don't, I really don't, but that's just my opinion, I don't know.
I think it's a tough deal to pass any tax, new tax.
Oh, it is, absolutely.
You know, but, but what I'm getting at is it may be a year from now that you would have to do this, so you have time. Because school board elections happen in February.
Best to go right over to the election board and talk to them and ask them about.
Oh, yeah, I've got the, I've got the dates because, yeah, we deal with that all.
So how does that?
To put it on there.
Yes, we're too late for it.
How's it meant for work with the private?
They are privately funded, they don't fund, they are not part of a 522 or anything, but they charge.
They charge, but they don't charge this community anything.
No, no.
They charge a patient.
Miller, yeah.
Yeah, I called about that, because we investigated.
Right.
We investigated that, private, privatizing the service before, and it's too expensive, you know, it's way too expensive.
Well, what they, how they tell me that he functions over there, he has another service in Tulsa, this Miller. And this is just kind of a subsidiary, and, and they have that.
Got a money maker somewhere else.
Well, that, but they also pick up the slack when it, when they have to have a, oh, licensed, uh, a, the person that can administer drugs and stuff like that, the paramedic.
Higher level.
Yeah, yes.
They get more pay for it.
Right.
All right, well, again, I appreciate your time, thank you all for seeing me this morning and all.
Pebbles I know was involved, you could call her.
Right.
But if you aren't getting a response from Alba, because they were, Joe Don was in on that, and all that.
And he's responsible.
And, well, but anyway.
522 is your answer.
I, I think anyway, I mean, you're.
Okay, well, we'll.
So whoever had that stuff, had all the figures figured up in it?
Here, here's how I see it, this is a personal deal, as I'm, I'm just like John. The 522 would be the county contribution, and it should lower some of the city's costs. I'm not gonna say it's gonna eliminate the city's costs, but they. I'm not gonna say it's gonna eliminate the city's costs, but they should be able to function with the city of Winoka and the five twenty-two.
In just Winoka school district?
Right, I mean, for that ambulance.
I'm like, John, I don't want to pass county.
I'm saying.
By the city of Alba, they've, they've, they don't need it, so why would they vote it in?
Exactly.
Right, well, I don't, I don't totally agree with that, John. And like I said, I've talked to.
Going off of what I think.
I've talked to some of the folks that work for that, for that ambulance service, and they have the same issues we have. Um, you know, they're having problems staffing because they don't make enough money.
Well, here's why I think it should be three individual five twenty-two.
Okay.
Is because we have three individual city ambulances now.
Right.
And that's how the county would share in the cost of leaving that the same way. The taxpayers of that school district would contribute through their ad valorem, and then the city would have to continue to contribute. And if you have one.
Countywide, yeah.
Countywide, that's what I think they got into, is then how much does each city contribute or what? Because it wasn't enough to fund each one.
The total operation, I see.
See, I mean, now that is strictly an opinion.
It's pretty tough, any, any way you look at it, and it ain't gonna get any better.
No, it's not.
I mean, in the Sunday paper, I seen where, what was it, Palm Creek and Hunter can't get volunteers for their fire department.
Right, well, we're running into that now.
It's just the younger generation ain't built like the older generation.
Well, for one thing.
They see trash, they walk by it. Older person might pick it up, you know, I, I'm just, I'm knocking the kids, that's just out of it.
Well, there's less of, because there's no good jobs here. It, it, it's all because of economic development. We're losing population.
Right.
And, and the, the good kid, the whatever that wanna go and make something of themselves are having to leave because we don't have anything here to.
There's no opportunities.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, um, that's what I'm concerned about, the continued decline of our quality of life in this area, you know. It, it doesn't just hurt Winoka, it hurts the whole area, so.
Right, well.
Northwest Oklahoma.
I think you're gonna find out from the census that's gonna happen this year, that, that all of Northwest Oklahoma is losing population. When you lose, you're, we're losing population because there's nothing to keep the kids here.
It all, they all go to the cities, cause that's where the action's at, whether the jobs or the, the action, you know. There's nothing out here.
And then they have figured out Northwest Oklahoma's not such a bad place to be.
Well, they do, but they can't afford to come back, you know. It is the problem, and I mean, that's our whole, our whole deal is economic development. We need to bring something to Northwest Oklahoma.
There's opportunity here if we can.
There is opportunity.
I mean, convince outside interest in that it's here.
We saw that, um, with U T V Takeover last year, and, uh, the people that sponsored that event came from Oregon and Washington area. They do it all over the United States, but in that timeframe, um, the amount of sales tax that we received during that event, showed that they pumped about two hundred seventy-four thousand dollars into the community while they were here. That's the kinds of things we need to happen routinely.
All the time.
Right, right.
Well, and, and take bowling, you know, if they don't get their stuff together, that's gonna dry a lot of this ambulance stuff up because a lot of these people that come down here are bowling and.
Which taught me.
Either.
Well, they come from all over the United States, but you're right, Texas and Kansas are.
There's a time from Wichita.
Seventeen hundred or twenty-seven hundred, they laid off of them.
I bet, and, and that's, uh, I guarantee you, some of them come to Winoka.
Yes, you're right.
And they won't now until.
It's a difficult environment economically all the way around, so. Well, again, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for talking.
Anyway, just to us, not, I mean, huh?
Thank you so much. That's John. See you, gentlemen. Bye.
Okay, number ten, approve, disapprove the sheriff's monthly reports.
Let's approve that.
I'll second that. Call favor?
Aye.
This one's safe.
I'm leaving.
Okay, number eleven, discussion of possible action regarding appointment of John Smiley to the O E board. I will make that motion.
I'll second it, even though.
And there's a favor, they want a favor.
They want a.
On favor?
O E the general board or executive board?
It said the general board.
I'm on the executive.
Are you?
But I think that's a decision out there. I think you gotta be on the general board to be on that, don't you?
There's two different ones. I mean, if we meet at the same time, they go quarterly, we go monthly.
Well, you wanted to change the verbiage on this?
Uh, I don't, I don't care. I'm just trying to correct you before you do make a mistake.
I mean, it's just, it says on here, the general.
Right, and that was the example he sent to everybody, so I just did what he sent out.
I, I, I don't care. I mean, it's, I'm just saying, I'm on the executive board, and I was on the general board, and they took me off and put me on the executive board. And put Shan or.
I'll call them and ask them if we need to change that before we do it.
I guess. I don't have their number. Does anybody have a number?
I don't have any number. What, uh?
Well, I mean, here's the thing.
Worded on the.
I don't think.
It's tied on the agenda.
Let's just, yeah, it just says board. Why don't we just leave it at board?
Well, just mark out general.
I mean, that, that'll cover both, right?
Yeah.
I'm on the executive board.
Just put board.
Board.
Sounds good to me.
Better than the slack. Then I'll be on it.
Number twelve, discussion of possible action regarding the December two thousand nineteen detention transportation claim in an amount of three hundred sixty-one dollars, forty-four cents.
I don't know if we approve that.
Second, on favor, aye.
That's all on the kids?
Yeah.
Even hog.
I was just gonna say word two, but. Where, oh, well, is it several trips?
Yeah, it looks like several trips.
Looks like these went to Woodward.
Kinda did, yeah.
Whoops, made a mark on it. Okay, number thirteen, acknowledgement to the board of the resignation for Ronnie Pitts from the Free Fair Board.
I talked to him, he, uh, he's just busy. And, uh, if they had somebody else that was ambitious to put on there, he wouldn't have a problem.
Okay. Number fourteen, discussion of possible action regarding the Free Fair Board election results and any appointments, reappointments needed for members of District one, two, and three.
So, Kelly Lancaster.
Okay, she becomes your new representative, then, John. Okay, doing, oh, this is.
Yeah, I had, I had, uh.
Oh, this is.
Three, right? I got three.
Yes.
Yes.
She's one of the ones.
Right.
Ronnie's.
Uh, Mike.
Mike Perrow and Kevin.
And, and then Kevin didn't file, so.
But he wants to be on there and told.
So we're gonna reappoint him, right?
In Ronnie's place.
Okay. So I'm gonna write those in here.
Pingleton's. Pingleton took Ronnie's, and Perrow's.
Mike's still on.
Yeah.
That form of motion.
I'll make that motion, yeah.
I'll second it.
Call favor, aye.
Okay. And, okay, so.
Now we got sheep hogs and cattle.
So, in District one, we're gonna do Cody.
Cody, okay.
And for, right, okay, so Cody.
They're reappointed.
Yeah, you make a motion.
Reappoint those.
Reappoint Cody for yours, and I'm gonna make a motion where you reappoint Brooke for mine.
I'll second your proposal.
Okay, yeah. So that takes care of, of all nine?
Uh, are they two-year term, four-year term? Three-year term, so Kelly's for three, Pingleton is finishing Ronnie's up, and then Perrow.
So Kevin will be up next year again.
Okay, that's where I.
Yeah, cause I mean, I'm going by the list on here. Here's the list, John.
I think Ronnie was the first one on there.
And that's. I might not get the last thing to print, Mark, right?
See, Lancaster goes down.
That's the numbers, that's as they come up.
Yes.
So, uh.
Okay, good. So there's.
Pingleton was up this year.
Mariana, did you get all that?
Yeah.
I can make you copy that if you want.
There you go, I don't need that anymore.
Okay, so, let's see.
Nothing changed, except that Kevin just needs to be aware that next year.
Yeah.
Okay.
We got people on there that wanna be on there, though.
Yeah.
I'm all of them.
Okay, number fifteen, discussion of possible action regarding inventory resolutions, surplus, and junk District two's ice machine ID number D two three two dash six. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
On favor, aye.
Okay, so where is that page?
Oh.
Oh, we've.
I picked up all that.
That's okay. All right, there. Can you make the motion in a second?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Bottom box.
Your side.
It feels bad. Number sixteen, discussion of possible action regarding inventory resolution to surplus, one international truck, ID number D three oh two dash one two six for District two. That's an international ten-wheeler that, uh, I'm gonna, we're gonna go out for sale, bid, try to sell, so.
I'll second that.
That was a motion, so. All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Aye. And just so it'll be in the minutes, they can, it is a District one shed, right?
Yes.
Down there, so.
What is it, old steak truck or something?
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, number seventeen, discussion of possible action regarding the inventory resolution to surplus and junk two computer by ID number S L two five oh dash one one and S L two five oh dash one two for the election board. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Surplus, all in favor?
Aye.
Any new business while you guys are signing up?
I don't have anything.
Electricians will be here, finish my stuff. The, pretty much done, other than the electric, electric down there.
Everything turned out good like you wanted?
Other than the mystical gray paint. Looks more like Pepto Bismol. I ain't real impressed with that, but.
It is what it is.
Well, I guess, then on the, we'll just wait for them to decide to go back out. Are they gonna need to go back? Are we gonna open the paint bids first? Or are you gonna go ahead and have them check into that before?
Yeah, I'll discuss.
I'll check on getting that repaired before you do the open the paint, cause if you open the paint, does that void it if we gotta get some repairs or something, or?
That's what I'm.
Well, they may wanna bid on it. The painters maybe can.
Right, and they might.
Yeah, but that can be a general.
Well, I mean, it could be, but if it didn't, we don't have to. They might as well submit that in their bid with it if it's something they could do.
Well, I mean.
If we get an amendment, like you were saying.
Well, I'm thinking as an amendment before we open the bids to have that, to do, to go up to the two, two contractors that can turn bid to paint bids, that there's gonna need to be some repair work before we open.
That way they can go ahead.
They can do the repair work, and we'd open them all at the same time.
Okay, yeah.
That sounds good.
I mean, rather than.
That'll keep progress going and.
And, uh, yeah, I mean, I, I think that it's just an additional deal that we, and those two bid on it, that I think we should go to them.
Right, no, I, I'm with that. I just, might as well get it all done while.
Yeah, well, I think the repair work's gotta be done before the paint, so I. But if they don't wanna turn in repair work, then I guess we're gonna have to go out and rebid the whole thing.
Right.
But I think for them to have to bid their paint again, that's cause we did it, but.
Is that gonna mess us up, uh, if we get into the April, March on the election year?
No.
No.
It won't?
No. All right, cause we're in surplus. That's all about surplus and stuff.
Yeah.
Now, are they, can they move, they can't move prisoners back in till this is done? Well, we might wanna get them, get that expedited.
Right.
Essentially, it's kind of became an emergency deal, but we gotta find somebody that was willing to do it.
Do it.
Right.
It's true.
Number nineteen, approve, disapprove blank purchase orders.
How many did we approve those?
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, number twenty, motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I will second.